Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Kingston Planning Board meeting. Uh, my name is Suzanne Cahill. I'm planning director for the City of Kingston. Um, if you, I just have a couple of quick announcements before we begin the meeting. Uh, if you do have a cell phone, I'm going to ask that you please put it on silent, uh, so that it does not interfere with our meeting. And if there is an emergency, uh, we ask that you use the stairs and not the elevator. If we assistance, please call or ask us and we'll help you. Uh, if there are any conversations that you have amongst yourself that are not with the planning board or involve the topic that we're discussing, I just ask that you please take them out of the room. Uh, the chambers is available this evening, uh, the conference room on the other side will have another meeting going on. So please be respectful of that. Uh, if you need to use the restrooms, they are out the door through the chambers on the other side of the building. Men's to the left, women's to the right. Uh, other than that, um, I want everybody to please be aware that the meeting is being live streamed and it is also being recorded. So please be respectful of that as well. Uh, with that, I'm going to open the meeting at six oh four P M. and turn it over to Chairman Platt to begin the meeting and introduce the planning board members.
Thank you, Suzanne. Great hello, everybody. Um, we're gonna start with introductions. Uh, my name is Wayne Platt, Jr. We also have members Charles Palaco, uh, Vince Archer, Sage Newkirk, Andrew Harris, and Kyra Rundig. Uh, we've already introduced to Suzanne the planning director. We also have assistant planner Kyle D-Day. Matthew Jankowski is our assistant corporation counsel and Alderman Sarah Pasty is the common counsel liaison to the planning board. Uh, item number one is adoption of the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting minutes. Just had an opportunity to take a look at them. Is there any additions, deletions, questions? All right, so, um, Sage and Andrew, you're, you guys are in, okay?
Um. Yes.
Sage.
And that.
No, we haven't.
You've been Robert.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
Okay. Um, okay, this time we'll make a motion that we adopt, approve them by a second. Second by Vince Archer, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Gary? Okay, moving into public hearings. Uh, the first item is, item number two is one forty dash one fifty and one sixty Boulevard. Lot line deletion and major waiver of the lands of Hart Ventures Corporation. Section block and lot is fifty-six point forty dash two dash four and fifty-six point forty dash two dash six. Sealed determination transect zone is T three N Ward five. Hart Ventures Corporation is the applicant owner. Uh, we do have people wishing to speak tonight on this. Uh, if we could keep, the, the, the public hearing is gonna remain open on this whole project. Tonight, we're only discussing the lot line deletion and the major waiver. So if you could keep your comments tonight, uh, you know, focused on that, what we're dealing with tonight. You know, like I said, the public hearing will remain open and you'll have an opportunity to speak up with the site. Okay, so, um.
Yes.
Okay, Elaine Skavicki, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, come, you wanna come up here and? And you work from twenty-seven Pettit Avenue?
Yes. Yes, I mean, yes. So, I'd like to read what Ellen has presented to the board. Is that all right?
This is Ellen Tafalco, you're telling me is that?
It's short.
Okay.
Shouldn't we put the clock down a little? I apologize.
And I believe we have received the same communication from her. So this is already part of the record, but you're welcome to speak.
I kinda wanted everybody to hear. Okay, please accept the following communication to depart the official public hearing of this project. The applicant for this proposed project has submitted several major waivers in advance. Moving forward with this development, it's quite disturbing that required submissions have not been available for public review. The new code states that there must be all submitted for a site development application and plan to be considered. There appears to be communications missing for review. See September twenty fifth email read from city engineer and other officials. Stormwater plans, and these are the big, stormwater plans are still not complete. The developer has not submitted a complete plan to address water pressures that will affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents that live in the immediate area and residents of the proposed development. And this is a serious oversight. Underground infrastructure services and utilities are paramount. Other proposed development has failed to materialize near this location due to the availability of these services. The proposed, um, project will dramatically change the character of the neighborhood and add stress to voluntary infrastructure. And traffic issues and ingress egress to the property is an issue that has not been resolved either. This would be safety and welfare issue in that the developer will need to communicate with Kingston School District to a, for a proper destination for school aged children to be picked up and dropped off once the development is completed. In this other project, is this another project where this board allows the developer to move forward ahead of required documentation? Therefore, based on numerous submissions, the planning board should table their discussion at this point until all required documentation is submitted for this proposal housing project. And I do read this respectfully to you and Mr. DeAngelis too.
Okay, thank you. I know you folks were late getting here. Are you wishing to speak tonight on this project? No? Okay. Oh, you're, okay. Um, anybody else wanting, wishing to speak? Okay. Yeah, so as I mentioned, um, before, the, uh, the only discussion we're getting at tonight is dealing with the lot line deletion and the major waiver request. Site plan is gonna be taking place at subsequent meetings, um, so the public hearing will be kept open. Okay, for that, for this, yeah, for the site plan. Okay, Mr. DeAngelis, how are you?
Good, Sarah, how are you?
Good.
Um. So, the reason why we need the lot line deletion is just because if we don't do that, when the project moves forward, there's just gonna be a bunch of like cumbersome cross easements and the center parcel is not, doesn't even have an S B L number right now. So it will just result in a single tax bill for myself and kind of streamline the whole process. Just to see that way. So, we'll have one address.
So just a couple of things, Joe, for any final map, um, and we'll put these into a, a decision as well. I would presume that, um, the older dashed lines from the prior layout, which never was formally, um, accepted, should be removed from the final subdivision map and just the tax parcels that, as they are today. And then the, the lines to be deleted should be identified, all right? So, so you remove a lot of the clutter and confusion of what's actually happening on your subdivision map?
Okay.
Um, and then also the easements will need to be clearly identified on there. So you're, you're gonna maintain an easement across the property for the two adjoining?
For that, yeah, sorry.
For access, correct?
Yes.
So that, that would need to be clearly, um, identified on the map and we need that easement agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
And we don't have the checklist, do you? Or these ways of the checklist, do you have that?
Uh, there shouldn't be.
I do have one question. Since, since the original lot right now is a, a non-conforming T three N lot, that's a large lot within the transect. Why do I need another major waiver for it? The original lot is already, um, half sized from what it says.
You're increasing it.
So this time, if it's non-conforming, it can remain as soon as shinning said non-conforming, it was just increasing it. Okay, that's what it is. Gotcha.
So the lot conforms to, I'm sorry, the, uh.
So the, there is both the, the, it's T three N transect. Okay, so you have a maximum, uh, lot width of a hundred feet and a maximum lot depth of a hundred and eighty. Um, with combination of the three parcels, uh, together, your lot width now becomes a hundred and ninety-five approximately. And the depth is approximately, would be two forty? I think that was my estimate. Probably a little ounce. Yeah, two forty, something like that. Yeah. So, they're, they're exceeding. So you can read in your staff notes, you have the explanation of the on the waiver, uh, from the applicant. And then we will go through the questions, uh, that are in the waiver checklist.
We can go to the checklist and, yeah.
It's just, this is for somebody else and I'll read one and then.
Okay.
Uh, it's the questions and, there's, okay, there's answers. Ready? Okay, so first, the first out question is the applicant has included a waiver request letter that clearly identifies and describes the waiver being proposed accompanied by plans or other visual representations as applicable.
Yes.
And these items are all on the portal. And, okay. In the letter, the applicant describes in detail why the waiver is needed and how the waiver request is consistent with the intent, design, and compatibility of the transit zone in which the project is located. I mean, ass shaking?
Yes.
Yeah, speak up. Um, will granting the waiver contribute to the realization of the overall intent of the transit zone and result in an improved project, which will be an effective and durable contribution to the transit zone?
Yes.
To support walkable neighborhoods and or mixed-use centers, the project emulates the neighborhood context for how far the buildings relate to the sidewalk, how the facade is designed, and how the building interacts with the street. That would be a not applicable in this case because you are just combining parcels of land. There is no construction proposed. Uh, the project supports a green and resilient future by, for example, reducing vehicular miles traveled, providing green infrastructure and or street trees and or including high-quality usable open space. Again, this is a not applicable because it's not a development proposal at this point. The project supports incremental development patterns in its size and density and supports infill development or the reuse of existing buildings. That one I would say it does. That, that would be applicable. So. Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the project supports the provision of a variety of housing types to support a range of income levels, age groups, and family units. Again, this is not a site plan. This is just a land combination. So it's not, that one would not be applicable. The project specifies street design that is walkable and applicable and will reinforce safe and comfortable environments for all users. Again.
And I.
Those are your questions that you generally go over. Are there any other thoughts from board members on the waiver request here?
No. No.
No.
No.
Okay, um. Yeah, was, was there anything else? Somebody done? I just gotta do seeker. Anything else on this?
You can use the.
All right, um, under seeker, this is a type two action. Um, so no further review of the board is required this time. Um. Motion.
Uh, you first wanna do the waiver?
Yeah.
You need to, one of the, uh, finding statement, Susan?
All right, so based on the, the responses on the checklist, um, I make a motion that we, um, approve the waiver request for item number two. Second?
Second.
Second by Sage. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's Gary.
Um, now, you gonna make a motion to close the hearing?
Yes, um, again, the, the public hearing will remain open for the site plan, which will be taking place at subsequent meetings. Um, but as far as this application tonight, um, I make a motion that we close the public hearing on, on this.
On the lot, on the lot line.
Lot line and the major waiver.
Good, right.
Yes. Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Gary?
Okay. So then we have, um, that the lot line deletion will be approved with the major waiver. The following conditions, board policy will be six on, six will be signed on the final plat. Uh, the signature block, um, where the chairman will be in place. The owner's signature block will be in place and the owner will sign, um, maps prior to the chairman's signature. Uh, they will move, they will remove all older parcel lines that are not related, but from subdivision never filed. The right of way for, or right of way for the adjacent lands must be identified on the map and recognized in a separate right of way agreement. A new resultant parcel description will be submitted to staff for review and approval. Um, five paper copies and one Mylar copy of the map will be submitted and the map will not become legal until it is filed along with the U D at the Ulster County Clerk's Office.
Any board policies, what?
Six.
Six, okay. So with all those items that Sue has just described, I'll make a motion that we approve the lot line deletion for item number two. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Sage. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Gary? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
We'll see you later. Thanks, yes. I don't mean to kick you out. What was that? Just watch your, watch your step come in there. Just watch your step. Okay. Well, okay. Moving on to item number three. Is twenty-one Bluestone Court subdivision of the lands of S S L I Holdings LLC and creation of a walkable neighborhood plan with a minor waiver for a dead-end street. Sealed determination, section block and lot is fifty-six point eighty-eight dash four, there's seven. Transect zone S D dash M F, large site standards, Ward one, S S L I Holdings LLC is the applicant. Okay, she's on. Okay, this was for the other, okay. Uh, we have Barbara Hill wishing to speak, uh, from two oh three Lucas Avenue.
Um, we're open here?
Sure. So now, what's your P O?
Where's that requirement? Um, yeah, Barbara Hill. I live at two oh three Lucas Avenue. Just found, uh, Lucas Pike from Bluestone Court and, um, I did go on and I reviewed previous comments, um. I just wanna say I'm a former alderwoman in Ward one and, uh, back when I was alderwoman, it was two plans ago, um, for that property. And, uh, that was a whole large development. Some considerations of the density and also, I don't know, green space, that kind of, those kinds of questions. I think since then, the form-based code has come in. Um, so, I did, um, read my current alderwoman's comments, which were amazing. So thank you, current alderwoman Pasty. Um, I think she really captured, um, in detail the concerns I have or, you know, the parking requirements or, I mean, the lack of parking requirements. Um, I was on the council at the time and that was, uh, a big discussion in the, the new zoning code. Um, and, you know, I read a lot about that and how it helps with, um, promoting more housing development. Um, I understand it for certain parts of Kingston. That particular area, there are no sidewalks that go that way. Um, Bluestone Court, to navigate that, when there's parking on either side, cars are parked or trucks. I really don't understand how the fire department thinks there's appropriate egress, you know, in that. Um, I think there were great pictures taken that were put in with comments. Um, and I'm just concerned, I mean, the traffic. Um, on Lucas, I mean, I'm a bit afraid to walk across the street to my neighbor. Um, and, you know, school, people walking to school, you know, alderwomen put, um, I think they took away a crosswalk. She had to fight to get it back. So it's not, and I drove around there today, seeing where could people park if there wasn't enough on Bluestone Court. Going this, the smaller streets and it's, it just, it just doesn't make, but then it's too dense. Let's just put it that way. It's simple, probably hit my climate. Um, and I agree with all the comments that have been put in. Um, Sammy Curtis and Amy Pearson isn't here right now, but she is very concerned about the drainage. Um, and I hope all of that has been looked into with the sewage and all of those other questions that I think were being considered in the past few months. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Not to mention you, that.
All right, we have Rachel Evans, two oh three Lucas Avenue.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel Evans. I live at two oh three Lucas, which is right next to Forside Park. And I, I wanted to speak tonight just to basically support what Sarah Pasty has put together in the comments. I agree a hundred percent. I also wanted to say that I was surprised to see the, the number of units had increased so dramatically. Um, I don't understand that, um, I, I think I, I just, you know, it's hard to just echo what other people have said, but on my own behalf, I've gotta say, it is dangerous on Lucas Avenue. It's very dangerous. Cars are coming from out of town. They're slowing down from fifty-five, where it was really supposed to be forty-five through thirty-five to twenty-five by the time they get right to the park. And so up at Bluestone Court, there's still not at twenty-five miles an hour yet, and they're probably more like at fifty. It's, it's actually terrifying. So, also, many, many of our neighbors walk the, the streets of Merrillina, Voorhees, Court, all of, um, those, those streets. And if cars were parked on one or both sides of those streets, it would be extraordinarily dangerous, not just for the kids when they're trying to get to school, but for, for people who do, do walk in that neighborhood. So, um, that's probably the, the biggest concern I have personally. I do object to the, the increase in volume, um, but I didn't study that to understand the, you know, the, maybe gritty about it. Um, I, I would much prefer to see parking within the, that lot for a good portion of the folks who'll be living in there. I don't know where they're gonna walk to. It's not walkable. I mean, how much Chinese food can you eat? How many times do you need, you know, can you go to Stewart's for everything? It's just a fantasy that it's walkable. I thought it would be walkable from my house. I have to really talk myself into walking uptown because it's so much easier to hop in a car and it's far. It's twelve-minute walk. So, thank you, uh, please accept that my comments as a very, very concerned citizen, wanting to retain the, the safety in our neighborhood and appreciating also new development. I really do. And I want the density. I'm a believer. I've lived in the city. I get it. But it's gotta work with what's already there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on?
Uh, I can speak. I'm John Earl. I live in forty-one Bluestone Court. Um, I had submitted comments prior to the June meeting, which I think got moved. Uh, I submitted a video outlining my concerns. I don't know if the board had a chance to review that back in June or July. But I made a, a prenup of that as well. There's several copies that you guys can share. One for myself.
Thank you.
So, I think everyone here is concerned with the density and how that affects parking. Um, I know the zoning base code doesn't account for parking, but I've outlined, uh, what the impact will be for us on Bluestone Court. And so if you look at page one of this document, you'll see, um, the gray is the road and the pink is the designated parking areas.
No, no.
And this is all available on the link that I'd sent in June as well. Um, if you go to the second page, um, you'll see the allocated parking for that, um, that's available. So there are nine duplexes being proposed along with, uh, or excuse me, six duplex buildings along with nine multiplex. Uh, that'd be a total of forty-one units and up to sixty-eight. That doesn't account, account for A P Us, which are also permitted on these sites. So there could be even more density than, uh, what we're estimating here. Excuse me, so on page three with, uh, just the yellow blocks outlining the cars, um, that gives us, uh, thirty-seven off-street parking spaces in those lots. And really the lots are so small, you can only get, uh, one car in front of each building on the street, except for one area where you can fit three. So you have eighteen off-street parking. So that's fifty-four total parking spaces for forty-one to sixty-eight units. You have two adults per unit. You're going to need at least ninety-four, uh, parking. Uh, parking spaces for them. So if you go to the next page, you'll see how we envision the impact on Bluestone Court will be. Um, so we're deficit of forty spaces uh based on the density that's being proposed. And the orange squares are parking spaces for cars and the gaps are really just where driveways are on the existing single family homes. Um, so the overflow of forty spaces would basically turn Bluestone Court into a parking lot for this new development. Um. In addition, the road is quite narrow and there are no sidewalks. So if you have cars parked on either side of the street. There's really not, there's one single lane for traffic to travel in either direction. Um, on page five, I've outlined a, a alternate density proposal, but we can come back to that. Uh, the pages after that have actual photos from when our neighbors have had parties and. There's a lot of traffic parked on the street. You will see how narrow. Uh, the additional parking creates and that's what Bluestone Court will eventually be like if we have, you know, the density that's being proposed in that area. Uh, the first page is near the entrance of what Bluestone um place would be. And you can see cars parked on either side. We have one lane to travel through. Um, further down, uh closer to my house, you'll see my neighbor standing there between two rows of parked cars. There's not enough room for a garbage truck. There's not enough room for a fire truck or an ambulance to pass through. And this is in the summer. Imagine if there is a snow emergency. We have s- snow piled up on the sides of the road. These cars are going to be encroaching even further into the middle of the street. Uh, you can see on page eight, there is three vehicles right next to each other. That is the width, you know. These cars are parked uh in the lawns or right next to the lawns. They're, they're not, you know, there's no. Camera trickery here. Uh, and also on the next page, you'll see it makes getting in and out of the existing driveways very difficult when there's that much parking. Uh, being used. And uh, just a few more examples, just, you know, you can see there's no sidewalks. Everyone walks down the middle of the street here. And this is a quiet cul-de-sac, you know, it's not a parking lot, not a busy through street. We all live there because it's quiet cul-de-sac and not densely populated. It's not midtown. We could have all chose to live in midtown if that's all we wanted.
Answer question. Okay, yes, absolutely. So all these residential homes appear to have driveways. Where are all these extra cars coming from? Like, are these?
This is from a party that they had. Uh, one was from a graduation party.
Okay.
And so with that opportunity, I went to take photos while there was that much traffic on our street. Our street, usually there's no traffic on our street because everyone has enough off-street parking to accommodate their vehicles.
So that was a unique circumstance. This is demonstrating what it would look like with the.
With the new development, we would have this kind of parking regularly.
Okay.
Because there are not enough parking spaces allocated for the units that are being proposed. So if you would like to consider what it would look like. At a lower density on page five, um by changing. The plans from multiplexes and duplex to primarily single family homes on these fifty-foot lots. And one duplex, which there is one lot that has two separate driveways already planned for it. That could hold a duplex. You could have sixteen total units on the fifteen lots. That would only require thirty-two parking spaces. And no overflow spaces would be required on the Bluestone or across Lucas. And if people have more than one vehicle per adult, there's still a little bit of parking on Bluestone uh. Place that they're calling it now. So that's our biggest concern is um. Too much density that's going to, because the, I, my other neighbors have already made the point. The neighborhood is not walkable. There's no bus stations near us. There's no bus stations on Lucas. There's no sidewalks on Lucas. There's no sidewalks. No one's walking to Hanaford to get groceries, you know. Everyone's driving. This is not. Uh, the part of town that people move to and think they can exist without a car. There's no bike lanes. Can't even bike. I have a neighbor that lives on Lucas. It's not here tonight. He bikes a lot and he's constantly harassed by drivers on Lucas. For driving his bike legally on the road on the shoulder. And like my other neighbor said, people are zipping up and down Lucas. I've crossed the street uh. Two to four times a day taking my kids to and from school and, you know, sometimes we have to wait five minutes for traffic to slow down to get across. So I get the intention of the code base zoning. But it shouldn't be applicable for this particular plot. It doesn't fit in with uh what they were intending. And it should be on the planning board to make the right decision to uh, you know, enforce what's going to be best for the neighborhood and the existing neighbors. And uh, the character of our current street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's another copy. Anybody else? Anybody else? Social Speaker, Bluestone?
I'll speak if the weather changes. I hope yes, we have somebody else. Well, they heard me speak a lot, so why not? Then I'll speak again.
Come on up. Yeah, we need you up here. Did you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name's Marco Leffert. I live on nine Alcazar Avenue in Kingston. So I'm on the other side of Lucas from where this development is going to be. Um, and we are already a little bit tight for parking where I live. And then there's an elementary school and a middle school one block behind me. So in the morning, all the kids are trying to get to school. And uh, with that overflow, if that overflow parking from over there. That's coming across Lucas and parking up on our streets, which it does sometimes when they have events over there. Um, there's just, it's going to be hazardous for all those little kids going to school. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Sarah Passy, uh, didn't make, didn't make speak before. I'll keep my remarks brief this time. Um, you've heard my neighbor speak. Um, what I want to speak about are basically sort of two things in addition to all the comments that I submitted. And that's that um in the last couple of months, I've had the chance to, to see what happens with traffic on Lucas Avenue. There have been two times when I've seen people walking along Lucas Avenue who have nearly been hit by cars. In one case, it was man, a man walking along the street and he was carrying a bag on his arm. And because the shoulder was so narrow, the bag was in the roadway. And so the car had to go around the person who was on the street. If there had been a car in the other lane coming. At him, that person would have been killed or hit, if not killed. And then I've seen another situation also. Where somebody was walking and a car swerved around that person because of the shoulders, which is really the only place you can walk. They are really so narrow there. Um, and so there really is nowhere to walk. And I've said this before and I've said it in my comments, it really is not a walkable neighborhood. Everybody has to drive. There's nothing to walk to. And even if there were sidewalks put in, let's just say twenty-five years from now, they put in sidewalks. There still would be the distance that you would have to walk, which in the winter, nobody is going to walk a mile and a half to go to Hanaford's to get groceries. And there is no reliable bus service and there's even less now that we have the change in, in UCAT service. That's taking people primarily around the county. It's not a Kingston bus service. Um, so the other thing that I, that I was thinking about in the last couple of months is that I come here every month and I hear applicants come and make their presentations. And all of them will talk about how the projects they're proposing fit into the context of the existing neighborhood. And how they are not going to cause any harm or present any impact to the surrounding neighborhoods. I've heard it with twenty-one Elizabeth Street. I've heard it with all of the various proposals. That have been presented to this board. Now, I have not heard these applicants come up here and talk about how this particular project. Is going to fit into the existing context and how it's not going to have an impact. Which makes me wonder, could it be that their plans, they're not saying anything because it doesn't fit into the context and it's, is going to have an impact? So that's, that's a concern to me because there is in the code, the statement that all projects need to fit within the context. Of an existing or adjoining neighborhood. And that's part of the form based code. It doesn't legislate, but it allows you to legislate what's appropriate for the context of a particular neighborhood. And I don't think this is. And another thing that I'd like to mention, just because it relates to why so many people are showing up. Is when I first got on the council, Mr. Samsey was kind enough to give me a call. And say that he was no longer going to move forward with his apartment complex, but during COVID, he had changed his mind about. Moving forward. It was an expensive complex to put in. And instead, he was going to put in fifteen billable lots of single family homes. And what did I think the neighbors would think about that? So I went around to the neighbors and I asked them and everybody was very excited. They want to see development. You know, in this area, they want to see more houses. And so I went back and I said to him, people were very excited about it. So what then, the reason you're seeing so many people now is that, imagine I was surprised when. The first presentation before the planning board was for these multiplexes and duplexes, which were not at all like what I had originally been told. Which seem like, as I said, a development that people were very excited about to have come in. And another thing I'll say that also just came to mind is if there are, you're in the, the map of. An example of a walkable neighborhood, it does show detached houses on the outskirts of the particular neighborhood plan. You know, the little illustrations in the book. And I looked at it and it's all detached, detached houses with duplexes, you know, that are fitting into a context of a neighborhood. So if there were detached houses put in at any point, any of the people who have the detached home could come before the planning board and say, it's time to put in an ADU. Or I'd like to expand. There's no reason they couldn't come back to the planning board and expand. But if you set a regulatory plan. That, that mentions and mandates essentially multiplexes and duplexes. If somebody wanted to build a single family home, they would have to come back to the planning board to ask for that, to de, so they have to come back to the planning board to ask for decreased density. As opposed to coming back to the planning board to ask for increased density. So these are the things that are occurring to me as I, as I review this, in addition to all the other things which I won't bother to go into because. I sent in so many pages of material, but all of them related to the code, which I went back in and I really examined thoroughly. So that um I would be knowledgeable about what all of you have to look at when you're making determinations. So. Um, thank you for reading all of those. I hope you did read them or will read them. Thank you for listening to the comments of my neighbors and myself. And um.
So if there's an immediate danger of people walking along Lucas Avenue now, why is there not an, an initiative now? By the city government to install sidewalks there? We wait for projects like this to involve, to, to come about.
You thought about, and I, I.
And this is, these walkable neighborhoods is something that the, the city has passed. This is the new form based code. And the walkable neighborhoods, I've said at, at past meetings, it's got to start somewhere, right? We've got to have. And you talked about not, the, the need not to walk down to Hanaford in the middle of winter. Which, why would you have sidewalks stand, you said? So. It doesn't mean a walkable neighborhood, you have to walk to the farthest, to, you know, to Hanaford. If they could be, just need to walk around the neighborhood to go to Stewart's, to go to the park.
Well, I.
So why is there, why is there now, you know, when, when we have a development being proposed? And I'm not saying I'm for or against it.
Right, I understand.
I'm just saying we have, you know, this development is here before us now. Why does it take these types of, these things? To stir conversation? And you said twenty years from now, we could have sidewalks. We should do it now. We got kids being, we've talked about kids being crossing the street. And I want, I also want to speak to the gentleman down there, you know, the, the folks, you showed all the cars parked alongside of the road. The people at Bluestone Court have created that condition in their own neighborhood. And it's something that they're fearing will happen with disdevelopment. And they create it on their own. So.
But that's temporary, sir.
It's, it's still, it's, it's a situation that was created by people in Bluestone Court, you know, so.
For an event, not for living.
But we're worried about people getting, you know, emergency vehicles getting in and out. Um, these, these are all, you know, this is, this is worth discussing, you know, especially with the sidewalks you're talking about.
Well, I'm happy to talk to you about sidewalks. And I would say that since I've been on the council, I've been talking to the mayor and to all of my colleagues about why there, you know, can there be a sidewalk on Lucas? The challenge is that a sidewalk on Lucas would cost ten to twenty million dollars. We don't have that kind of money. It's, I, I've struggled to get a hundred thousand dollars to put in. Four hundred foot section of sidewalk on Merrillina to keep kids from getting hit as they walk around the corner down to the school district. And I think in the long run, maybe there's a sidewalk study being done right now. To look at where sidewalks, both repairing existing ones and putting in new ones, where they can take place and prioritizing them around the city. Now, I know enough about how the city works, since I've been on the council now for two years, that when determinations are made about. Where should a sidewalk go in? Where should money be spent? And I'm not talking about city taxpayer money, because we don't have that kind of money. But I'm talking about the grants that come in from the state, like CHIPS money and other money that comes in for sidewalks. There's a list of priorities and the priorities are really where there is the greatest volume of traffic, whether it's pedestrian or, or the cars. You know, in terms of where money is prioritized in the city. Compared to other areas of the city, there are, this is less a priority because. When you think about uptown and you think about all the Bluestone sidewalks that are crooked and the trip and fall hazards that exist in uptown. That's where, if we get money, that's where money needs to be spent to make existing sidewalks where a lot of people are walking more safe. There also is a sidewalk going in on Fox Hall and other main streets that are commercial areas that also have residential areas next to them. These are places where people can walk to commercial stores. And so it makes sense on streets that have a lot of heavy traffic. To have, for them to be the priority instead of a street like Lucas. So yes, as much as I have been advocating for it. I have come to realize that it's not going to happen anytime soon because there are a lot of priorities and I hear about them all the time when I go to public safety committee meetings. And people are talking and we hear about people who are tripping and falling and broken sidewalks and, you know, a lot of other issues that are really dangerous for people. So this, in the long run. Given that this is not really a walkable area of Kingston, it's not a priority. And I will say also that. That, you know, a walkable neighborhood means, you know, I mean, there is the definition that I looked up and it's a mix of housing, civic space, open space, retail and service choices. I would complete advocate for dense housing in areas where those are accessible. For example, as you know, when you said, you're right, it has to start somewhere. And I'm happy to say that it is, you know, that it's starting, it's starting, and you've seen it coming here and we see it coming to the council. It's starting along Shrank Drive. Yeah, it's, it's coming along Shrank Drive. It's going into Frog Alley. There are other places that are close to services. That are really appropriate for dense housing and I will be voting in favor of those projects to happen because it makes sense there. Anyway, I'll shut up now.
All right. So there's a lot of reference to this not, the area around this not being walkable neighborhood. When this is being called a walkable neighborhood, that is the plan itself. That's what they're creating will be the walkable neighborhood. Is that, that's what the. That's what the zoning code is trying to, yeah, because everyone else is talking about the neighborhood around it not being walkable, but we are talking about. Places to put in will be able.
Essentially what you want, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but I would assume every subdivision is walkable in that sense. So how does this, how does what they're proposing differ from a subdivision? To my mind. It's a subdivision be called a walkable neighborhood. There are no commercials. There's no point of store. There's really nothing there. It's a subdivision that doesn't even empty onto Lucas Avenue. It's a subdivision that enters into another subdivision that then enters onto Lucas Avenue. So the possibility for traffic backups and a lot of other things. Is really, i- is there, you know, we, we can see it, we can see it coming.
But this is all the development that was encouraged with the form based code that the common council approved, the mayor approved. So um, and then when we have developers wanted to do something, we discourage them doing. So, um, and then when we have developers wanting to do something, we discourage them doing it.
I would say, again, everything is based on context. I don't think the Form 8 Code mandates that every neighborhood in, in Kingston should be able to, you know, be walked. I'm thinking about Wilbur Avenue, Ward Nine. You know, would you, would you recommend that there, if somebody wanted to come in with a proposal like this in Ward Nine where it's not?
Does stipulate that when you have parcels that are over two acres in size in cities in Kingston and you're developing them, they have to either be developed as a walkable neighborhood or a conservation village plan? When you have two acres or more, unless you have a special district multifamily, which is a multifamily development project. It's not a separate parcel. It's one, one, um, multifamily project.
So I guess my question would be, what is the definite, I mean, why is the definite, why does the definition not apply? Why would you not put in a mix of, you know, put in a, a corner store or open space or other things within that development that would make it a walkable neighborhood?
The developer, they can't, they would, and in this instance, when it's less than five acres, um, the project sponsor has to choose two building types, okay? They could have chosen a neighborhood, uh, business building type, um, and put it in the, in the project.
Which might have made more sense, actually.
But that, that's a decision that they made, not the board.
But, so the board really can only decide on the two types of.
They're required to have two, okay? Um, they could put three. Um, they're, but they're mandated to have at least two. So you couldn't do all detached homes within this project. You can't do all duplexes. There's got to be some mix when it's less than the five acres.
Right, and I think that's why I proposed in one of, one of the things I submitted, that there would be sort of eight detached houses and seven duplexes that would create twenty-two units on fifteen lots. So it's more, it's not just single-family homes, but the detached houses next to Bluestone Court would be in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood because context, according to the Form 8 Code, is important. And that's, that's what we're saying, is the context of where it's going to be cited and public safety. You know, like, public safety is important, context is important, impacts are important. The code also says that it doesn't want.
And that's why we have input from all, all of the folks that you've just described, public safety, you know, that's one of them. There's, it's all part of the input we have to, and it's good to have discussion, right?
I agree.
I'm glad we have discussions. Um, we want to make it the safest, best possible project that it could be, if it does come to be. So, um, we.
And I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the efforts of the board, and I know what you go through because I do come and see you here every month. So thank you for your deliberations and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on? Okay. Young man? I'm going to drag a chair up there with you or whatever, I don't know. Sorry about that.
You can take this one, so you don't.
Thanks, it's all good. Stephen Sanzi and Luke in Toronte are here. All right, um. The other updated plans?
We have updated plans, yes. So those were uploaded on the seventh, mostly incorporating, uh, feedback from John Schulz. Uh, and our engineer going through, making revisions to the lots, the, uh, easements and HOA damage areas. Several other things, details on, on the retention pond and that sort of thing. Um, we updated one sheet today, and there might be a couple of light comments just on example building lots, sheet SP three point one.
Um, and there's other folks, there's other seats back here if you want to get a better view of what we're talking about.
So this is actually a good plan. What you, what we've, what we've done here, there was a concern obviously with what's going to be left to the, uh, you know, to the, to the owners to maintain. So per, uh, city engineer, uh, suggestion, we created an HOA. So there's going to be, there's going to be an HOA responsible for maintenance of the retention pond, and then the steeper slope along the back of lots nine through, uh, fifteen, um, as well as the area that goes out to Lucas Avenue. So, um, that's all reflected in the latest plan set, and then additional drainage details and things like that. And that required some of the lots to get a little bit smaller, which impacted the fifty percent max lot coverage. So those tables were updated and then stood a quarter.
So does anybody understand what Luke is just talking about? So where the stormwater tension, that pond area is rather than outletting to the adjacent property is now going behind all of the upper lots. Um, I think ten through, is it ten fifteen?
Nine through fifteen.
Nine to fifteen is a, a swell and a piping, a piping, right?
And then it connects over there, that's what it's connecting to?
No, that's, that's like an overflow area there.
An overflow there area that will, you know, manage that water as that, as that pond fills up. To let it train and percolate through the, through the earth. Nine shows the adjusted, uh, HOA areas that, that's been updated since the last, so.
Have you submitted an application to, to the Ulster County Health Department yet? Because, you know, they, 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 they got that requirement, they, they become in.
Okay, well, we have not. We've gotten the clearance letter from the DEC.
Okay.
Um, but the health department, once we had, had the plan finalized and sort of locked, um, which I don't expect it to change in terms of the lot sizes, drainage locations and all that, at this point, then we can, uh.
Okay, that's, that's on your punch list then?
Yeah, okay.
Have you, I would start that process. I would initiate the discussion with them now, rather than later.
Okay.
It's, uh, the, the appropriate time to start talking with them.
Yeah, we'll have our engineer initiate.
And I know, I know we've discussed the density before, um, and it's obviously still on everyone's, um, minds, as you heard in the public comment, um. What are your thoughts in, in adding maybe another type of how, uh, type of building type here, um, along, you know, just to walk by for a little bit of additional variation?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we've heard all the comments. Um, I think to, to just kind of address a few, um, our intention was originally, we went over this several months ago, to, to do s- single-family subvention, right? Going to Form 8 Code and actually starting to put that plan together, we realized we can't. So we're going to do a walkable neighborhood plan. So then we started with duplexes and single-family homes, and then we get further into it and realize what are the, uh, acceptable building types. So that's sort of how it falls. I feel like we've talked enough about that, but just to remind everyone. Contextually, um, we, I, I guess apologize if we have overstated this enough, but we feel strongly that it does fit the context. We have Miller's Lane, uh, apartment complex adjacent to this parcel, right, which is a very dense apartment complex. All of the lots down Lucas, um, Browning Terrace, those are fifty-foot wide lots for the most part. The only one that's different really is Bluestone Court. Those are oversized lots. Across the street from Lucas, on all the small streets around Edson and Bailey, those are all their lots. So our feeling is that it's, it actually is a nice transition between the two. It reflects that. There's nothing greater than two stories here. So contextually, they follow the Form 8 Code. Um, I, I don't see how it doesn't fit. As far as a third building type, I mean, we've, we've thought about that as we had to sort of identify and, and name which ea, what each one was going to be. You know, I mean, frankly, we don't think a corner store or commercial business makes a lot of sense. Um, even if that, some may think that, that would be helpful. Um, so. I mean, right now, this is what we're proposing, um, and we, we've thought a lot about it. We've discussed it before.
The one with the driveways. And we're just talking a little bit to the parking because you did in one of your, in one of the sheets of the driveways.
Yeah, SP one, the Santa.
Um, yeah, where the plan that showed them, the.
SP one shows them.
It was.
Right there. Yeah, so we agreed on the, um, off-street parking. We, we are showing required, um, not just showing, not just proposed, but required in the deeds that there is a, uh, there is a driveway long enough to accommodate two vehicles beyond the front plane of the house. So, um.
There's a couple of them are wrapping actually around the backside, is it?
Yeah, just, yeah, uh, lot eight and, uh, lot one has two driveways, two parking areas. And yes, nine does go around the thing.
So there's sixteen driveways then?
Uh, fifteen, sixteen, yeah.
Okay.
Right, so the, the one, though, I, I don't know, um, I believe we had pointed it out in an earlier comment to you um, before the meeting, Luke, is that the corner lot there, lot one.
Yeah, it's two.
You're going to have to take one off, um, each property is only allowed one curb cut. So for purposes of the plan, I mean, obviously that can be modified when actual physical building construction, as long as there is a, you know, it can be a note added to the plan that they're representational only, but when physical construction, they might be modified slightly to, in a different location. All right, um. So another thing we, we're thinking about, uh, and we haven't really discussed yet with you, but now we'll talk about it is, um, with the connection to Lucas Avenue, um, you know, in some of the former plans that had been shown as a pedestrian accessway. Um, I know you're going to be using that for your construction, for your construction entrances. Um, with the homeowners association, originally it was taken off as pedestrian access and sidewalk area for this subdivision because it was part of that end.
Lot was before it's moving.
It's no longer part of that end lot, but it's now part of the homeowners association covered area. So we were thinking it's an opportunity now to put that connection, that pedestrian connection back to Lucas. Um, you know, what are your thoughts on that?
Oh, absolutely. We have no problem adding that back in. I think the concern, and some of the comments we heard was that one isn't going, it's going to be, you know, no sidewalks there. So we took it off. But we can put that.
Okay.
I mean, since previous project, yeah.
Yeah, for the apartment complex, we have a second block.
So that's no problem. Happy to add that back in.
Would that sidewalk be maintained by HOA?
Yeah, maybe it's a good time to discuss what HOA will cover. And I know you can also speak maybe to you, what you presented to the council at this point.
Yeah, so we actually, um, we have to go back to council with the latest update to this. Um, they obviously wanted us to get further along in this process before they would do anything. And of course, ultimately, it's up to the city at the end of construction to, to agree to take on the, the street dedication. But, um, essentially the HOA is going to be, uh, it's going to be written into all the deeds. It's going to require regular, uh, maintenance on the storm structures specifically, um, per the required timeline. SWIP yearly cleaning out of those, uh, retention pond and that sort of thing. Also, the, it's the very last page, um. I'm sorry, yeah, this one. Um, also that, that strip along the back of nine through fifteen is a bit steeper, so there's going to be lawn maintenance included in there. Um, and then the entire center meeting, which will also have annual cleaning of, of any drainage structures. There's some benches and seating areas, the sidewalk, which will now carry out, uh, the eastern area to Lucas Avenue. So it's, it's lawn maintenance, uh, snow and, uh, storm water system management, which is all well documented, documented in terms of what type of maintenance is required and how often on those structures. Um, so that's essentially what, what HOA will cover.
Right.
We're going to, um, you know, if developed, we will build the, the street and the road in coordination with John, proper inspections, all the things. We've, we've discussed a lot about the, the road and everything. That way, if the city does take the street, we know it's up to standards. Of course, the city also reserves the right to not take the street at the end, so. That, it's not contingent on, on us. If the city were not to adopt the street, then the whole street would go falling into each other.
Do board members have any comments or thoughts that you want to ask the applicants?
And, and that, that pedestrian access out there, is that going to be, uh, beefed up? Or is that going to be, you know, the she access there, but that'll be tied?
It was.
Previously, but.
Yeah, I think we had like a, like a traffic rated paver. Um, I, I know the chiefs looked at this. I, I don't know if.
I don't think they thought it was necessary.
I don't think this time.
Because we had the, the amount of right-of-way and traffic flow for fire trucks.
So, that's off the table?
Yeah, now there's, it's a one-way going around.
Okay, yeah.
We have, we have room for ladder.
Yeah.
So that'll just be restored from the construction, stabilized construction entrance, entrance after construction, restored back to grass with a concrete sidewalk.
And are you phasing construction to this or going to be?
What do you do with it?
Um, the, the site infrastructure would, would pretty much all go up to the point where the road is, is complete and all the underground utilities are there before we would develop the first lot.
Is it your intention to do the construction, to sell the lots and build the?
Yes, I think we'll, we'll potentially keep a few of the, of the lots and developments, um, or sell them with a package to build. Um, of course, whenever that time comes and all the infrastructure and roadways in, we'll assess the market at that point.
Okay.
Narrow falls, just get this subdivision, all create the lots.
And eventually we'll get to, uh, uh, the portion where we have to talk about the county comments. Are you, you're working on?
Yeah, we, we, there's a, uh, we could talk more about that, I would assume about that, um, offline. But there was quite a few comments were kind of not really reflective of the Form 8 Code. Um, and I, we, we talked about that briefly, that, you know, uh, don't know that they actually referenced the Form 8 Code when they, they wrote their response. But yes, we can provide a, uh, line-by-line response to whatever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll give you the staff notes. When, um, I know we had talked about the, the street lighting and the type of lights. And I, I can remember seeing, um, a sample light picture of coal on a, like a separate sheet of paper, but I'm not seeing them in the plan sets or in the submission.
Okay.
I mean, you, your lighting levels and your intensity, it's, it's cited there what it is, but there was a, a drawing of it.
There was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that may have got, may have slipped off at some point, um. But we'll make sure that.
Did they, it is matching, it was somewhat matching what's on the stones, right? Good. And I, I couldn't understand the chart. It, they start, it starts with pole number eight, and I was curious why that's because Bluestone?
I think those might have been counted in for somehow, you know?
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know exactly why, but I do remember seeing that spec and.
Okay.
That it's not out here, yeah. That it's not here, yeah. Number eight, two seventeen, yeah.
And I couldn't figure out why that number is, yeah. So, you know, around any thoughts, Andrew, comments, thoughts?
So the code doesn't require any parking, um.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, so. Well, there's lots of comments about the issues of parking going out to other streets, but I mean, this is. Parking on city streets, legal parking. I mean, if, if there are streets where you can't get a car down, if there's parking on both sides, does the city need to look at, often the allowing parking on one side of that street?
To go through the council?
Yeah, yeah.
Legislate, yes.
But is that the problem of these developers, that's?
Mm-hmm.
In my mind, if, if that needs to happen.
Well, this is a, these streets are one-way.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if it's causing, if.
Right.
If there's a street next to this that can accommodate. But it's, I, I don't think that's this development's problem, that's for the city building that is saying, shouldn't allow parking on both sides of the street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, between the two schools there, I grew up in Kingston, used to ride my bike to the valley. I threw the parking lot of the, of the temple or something out there, or Millers. It's always been, I mean, I mean, since as long as you could, you could shake your head like, it was. And although any record of many children being hit by a car riding a bike over an alley road, have you? You have to ride it, I mean, do you?
I think there was somebody hit on Lucas long before I took, took off. I think what, oh.
You're saying comments of. Safety and all this, but where's that coming from?
What that's coming from is people who've lived in that neighborhood for decades.
We're gonna, we're gonna frame them, uh. But he, yeah.
Here's a comment.
Yes.
I think it's tough because. You have a housing crisis in Kingston. We have to have a place to put people that wanna live here, and that people that already live here need a place to go. I think that it's tough because it's going to change what we're used to even more, but I. I, I applaud the effort to suggest and have a plan that has parking included, because they're not even. Required to do that by the form-based code. I think that a lot of the time we talk about the, this particular topic of parking. It goes back to decisions that are made by our common council to make amendments to the form-based code. And a lot of times it comes to this place where we have developers that are spending a ton of money rewriting projects, adapting to. Of all different types of feedback, and then we have this like, you know, I think for every single person that lives. In every corner of the city fears more cars, because we don't even know where to put our own, and we also don't even know what to do with guests if we. Host a holiday, God forbid, I think it's a common thing, um, but we have to start somewhere, and I just think that. If there's checks and balances in place, and if we say, okay, if these are individual lots that are going to be sold and then developed per, you know. Person or owner, the suggested, you know, area for having a driveway that would accommodate two cars, let's say. Um, what is the process, does that, does the process of development continue to come back to the planning board as each project lays out? Whereas is an approval for your, the entirety, and it's just a go?
Yes, it's an approval for.
Just the lots, and then each lot goes through the building department about.
So what is it?
Unless it's four or more. Yes.
Changes it, but.
So we're two when you say.
If there is, if there's, um, in the plan. Like an area showing a parking, a driveway, what is the concern that that wouldn't be the case?
Cause it's gonna be.
It's needed into it, they have to have a driveway.
Right, so, and then the potential for how many individuals would be living on a, on a. In, in an area or in a, on a lot.
But they have to revise the law.
Right, so, you know, I think that the best that we can do is to be. Be realistic about, you know, how many cars that this is gonna give an influx to, to the neighborhood. But I also think that there is a plan where they're not even required to have one. So I, I, I see a lot of effort there, which is, we've seen projects that have like none, and they're just not even required to. But I think that's irresponsible, and I appreciate there's at least some effort.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, we appreciate that, because initially it was like, okay, there's no parking required, and then it was discussed, and it's like, well, can you. What drivers, and how do we make sure that they're built, built, won't require them? You know, so I mean, that is, that's the effort to try to do what we can with the space we have, um, without. Building half the lot into parking.
Well, being realistic about the people that are gonna live there, they, they're not gonna not probably need a car, you know, I mean, I.
Oracles to get lots created.
And not worry about it after.
I didn't say that.
I'd say, I'd be. Vince, Vince, any comment?
No, no comment.
No, see?
I mean, remind me again, I feel like we discussed this the last time, if they were to sell these off one by one and not subdivide it in the way that they're doing, they basically would never come in front of us. If I'm, where they're mainly here because of the wealth, that's really what it boils down to, is to create the road and to create the subdivision.
The subdivision and the walkable neighborhood plan are required planning board reviews.
Right. But at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to the building, I mean, we're gonna do as much as we can, worst-case scenario, this is what it could look like, but.
Plan gets put onto the zoning map, and each parcel is identified as how it will be developed, so. Each parcel will be on the zoning map, and it will say, this is a duplex, this is a small multiplex.
They will have the option to come in front of us, so if they only want to do a single.
If they want to change. It has to come back to the planning board because the walkable neighborhood plan will change, so that would come back to the planning board. If they just wanna, if somebody wants to just build the duplex, they can go just to the building department and.
And go to the, right. If they want to build a duplex on a multi, on a, on a.
They'd have to come back to the planning board to get.
If it's not on that designated lot, so if it's on a, if it's on a small multi-plex, they want only build a duplex.
That, that's where we're here with the two building types. Originally, we thought it was just a, a building type on the lot.
It's, it's much more of a prescriptive sort of, uh.
And there's no way within the form-based code that you can just say within a walkable neighborhood, they can pick one of these three types to build. On any of these lots within this walkable neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, in, in the code, there is a table that tells you exactly the makeup of. The walkable old neighborhood or the conservation village plan, depending on what you're doing. And in this particular instance, the route that they chose, they used T three zoning. And they, because they're in a five, they only had, have two building types, so. But other ones have, you know, forty percent of, would be this, fifty percent of, and they actually, they create separate transects within the. Within the neighborhood.
Cause they have larger space to use them.
It gets a little bit more complicated with larger tracts of land.
Right.
Chuck, any thoughts?
Well, no, no, I don't.
Okay.
But I think historically, the, the planning board has been the lightning rod for a lot of controversial projects, you know, that's, that's. Our, our job is to sift through, um, all of the, the public comment. Um, and we've worked with the developers to try to, to make the safest, best development possible. Um, is it allowed use? Um, and, you know, I, I've, I've said my piece with, you know, over, over the last several meetings with this. The one thing I think that, you know, stands out for me is that the developers have taken steps to alleviate. Um, that they don't need to have parking, but they've taken steps to alleviate, you know, that concern, and may not make everybody happy. Um, but again, that they've taken steps to, to try to make this the best project, I think, possible. Um, I, that's, that's my comments. Um, we're not making any decisions tonight, there's stuff that needs to be done. Yeah, um.
Is it possible to ask them a question at this time?
Um. I, I don't wanna get into the back and forth.
Well, I'd like a whole board to hear that. I'm just curious what, uh, in the code is compelling you to do. Duplexes and multiplexes?
We could talk on.
You want to answer that in some of the order?
Cause I want to.
We, we've talked.
Yeah, we've talked, this is, this is, this is what I didn't wanna get.
I understand this is a hot topic, I get it, there was a whole discussion on that, how we got there and why we chose those. Right, but.
We could talk on some of it. To leave us off, okay, so, um. We're inclined to, I, I'm inclined to, uh. Close the public hearing on this, um, any discussion on that? Okay, also, what's that? Good, alright, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number three.
I'll second.
Second by saving the current, all in favor? Aye, opposed, Gary? Like I said, there's still some more things to.
Yeah, it's very small, staff notes, things like that, that we're discussing, so we'll be, we're gonna try to get.
December, which is early.
Right, that's what's gonna hold up quick, it's the, the meeting was December eighth, it's the second Monday, September third Monday.
Yeah.
Um, because of the holidays, and, uh, so the deadline for submissions is next week.
Yeah.
It's tight.
Understood, if there are some, some staff notes that come from, you know, later this week or whatever, we wanna. Really try and get those incorporated.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you current set. You might have extra, can't look tonight.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to table item number three. Second with Vince Archer, all in favor? Aye, opposed, Gary?
Thanks for the, thank you.
I'm not sharing, or are we?
Yeah. Okay, moving into old business, item number four is twenty-five Frog Alley, it's a site plan for a mixed residential development. Some commercial workspace and major waiver for alternative building type. Section block and lot is forty-eight point three hundred fourteen, there's one, there's twelve, secret determination, transect zone T five N, fourth two. BBC Kingston LLC is the applicant owner.
Hello.
Picture name for the recording.
Alessandra Rosin, the applicant, and I think, I believe, the.
Hey, everyone, yeah. Sorry, I, I have the flu and my sister's getting married in four days, so I don't wanna be the, uh, the object. Of scorn in twenty years, getting everyone's second at wedding, so I'm, I'm hanging out at home.
Likely excuse.
Congratulations.
So we, we submitted the, uh, with. To, I guess, we submitted some of the answers to the, to the comments from the board, um. We're still, uh, we're still waiting for more information, uh, and conversation between the, the city engineer and the, you know, civil engineer. Apologies, I will submit another for, for the next, the next meeting, so apologies, because this is not a complete set of, uh, answers, so we tried to. Get them all rolling. Um, so, aside from, from the plans, then we also submitted our major application, major waiver application. Um, for the topology, which we call the Robe House Court, and, uh, um.
So, so as the board knows, last month, um, we initiated the, the lead agency, um, initiation. So that circulation process has begun, um, and thirty days is not over yet for that circulation, so. We won't be doing any decisions tonight, but what they wanted to do was to bring the board. Their major waiver application, which is, uh, proposing a new building type. And they're calling it a Robe House Court, combining the cottage court concept with the Robe House building, uh, which are two. Building types that are currently in the form-based code, um, so we wanna really focus on that, um. I hope that you've had a chance to take a look at the staff notes before this evening, um, and we've. Had, we've presented some questions and some thoughts, um, with respect to it, but also, you know, so that you familiarize yourself and look at. You know, look at what the, uh, allowable building types are, um, in this area of Kingston. Of town, um, and look at what is being proposed by the developer, um, and. Come up with, uh, any thoughts or comments and feedback to them, respect to the post.
And if I may, just a very quick background story of why we came with that, with this new topology, uh. We, obviously, we, we, we started to, uh, design, uh, the site plan with this idea. Of creating a space that has. Space that had the interior streets and, and the plazas and the squares, uh, to create a walkover. Area within, uh, within the, within the, the lot itself, and also a space that was not just for the people living there, but. That had some, uh, uh, commercial spaces to invite people from the neighborhood to walk in and really activate these states. Uh, we started looking at what, uh, that meant, we're just using, uh, the existing, uh, technologies. And, and there were a lot of, a lot of, uh, minor waivers that we had to apply for in order to, to make that work. Mostly because all of these technologies ask for private space in the back, the walk-in houses and the, the bikes, et cetera. And on the other end, we wanted to instead not create a private space in the back of each individual building, but rather distribute a more public space in the front. Here to create a more of a community than that, uh, these small neighborhoods. So that's the whole idea behind, uh, behind proposing, you know, the waiver. Not planning about, feel that that was a possibility, we know it's something that the code, uh, tries to promote, so, so does the idea.
Do you have this, this one?
I have.
This was the previous submission, right, this one or is this?
Still, you know, it's still.
Okay. Um, I'm just. I'm confused, the, the difference, the type of building we're proposing, is this is, that was your last, the last. Month's submission, right?
That, yeah, the, the project is still the same.
Okay.
So, basically, you, like, under the form-based code, within each transect. Um, there are prescribed building types in, in the code itself, it now has the architectural. Um, characteristics, um, and elements of buildings and building forms and building types that. You have to conform with, and so they, as, as Alessandra was just saying, they looked at. All of the building types allowed, and they knew the type of project that they were trying to create. In this small space, um, that they have, and if they were looking at putting. Using multiple building types the way the code prescribes it now, they were ending up with a multitude of waivers. And, and their project was just getting more complicated in terms of not performing. And so there is an opportunity in the code that you can present, um, to the city. Um, to the planning board specifically under a major waiver request for a new building type, which is, can be a unique building type. And it is for this project alone, it is for this location only, um, and if, if something that the council. Sees that, you know, there's an opportunity to apply it in other areas of Kingston. Then the council or planning board can do a zoning amendment, but this will only be for this property, so. as a major waiver um request, they're they're presenting their building form and how it's gonna work on their site. Um, and that's how we've evaluated.
And just the major waiver creates that new building type?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Is it still with the same intention as it was originally, with it being focused on the Dutch type architecture and all that stuff?
Right, that's the history. The basis of the design theory that they're looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. The the design, nothing has changed in terms of the layout.
Yeah.
It's a design. Uh, we haven't updated the renderings. Uh, you can see the elevations and and the plan on on the submission. Um, but I guess we wanted to pack all this this uh major waiver before daily rendering some of the children's development, but nothing really changed. So since we presented this.
Alright, so Kyle has on the screen up there a portion of the code which shows you the different transects across the top of the table and the building types. And obviously, for the different transects, only certain building types are allowable within those um. And what we were just talking about before, like in the T three N, you see small multiflex neighborhood business. Um, those are the building types that that last project could choose from. As a lot, you can't just choose anything, you can't choose what's allowed in a certain transect.
Yep.
Besides a historical reference to the settlers being Dutch, is there something about this style of housing that is intended for like accommodating a maximum capacity of units or sort of amount of how homes, or is it more style?
Uh, we have a maximum capacity uh. Do you mind going back to the? Yeah, I was on it. Uh, so we have, we don't really have a maximum or 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 currently what we're proposing, I don't know, we're going to do a minimum of this. Uh, we don't have a maximum number of of units per building, but there's a maximum uh height of of the they store per per individual unit, and again, these are all the units that share a carriole physically. Um, so the Royal's of style. Uh, so there is a way of sitting. See. Stay stay super nonviolent, but still within the within the density and the of the neighborhood. Um, but there is, yes.
And this is not something that's intended for like, this project isn't intended to be um directed for like like affordable housing or like that. This is just this is home, this is straightforward.
This is a straightforward project, they, but because of the number of units, they are subject to the affordable housing requirement also under the code, and that based on is that's the sliding scale based on the number of units in the project, you know, seven to nineteen, you have ten percent affordable, once you get from twenty to I forget the number to forty, there's a workforce component. And and as you go higher in number of units, the affordability and workforce housing increases. Right. They're still subject to that, and they're they're aware of that, and there must be these restricted covenants that will ultimately be invented.
Right.
Um, so but right now, we're really looking at just a couple things, you know, that I had thought of is where if the um where the building's front door onto the public street or onto a shared courtyard, one thing I want to see is I want to see the language modified so that the building that sits on a street, on a public street, I want it to have the front facing facade to the street. We don't want to have the back of a building on the street, so things like that, and particularly here with Frog Alley, you don't want, you you want that to feel like a sloped old street. You don't want it to be the backside of the building. This gives the option, so you don't want that option in this. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the language there. So that's one thing, you know, the other thing is to just think about, you know, and look at like the type of frontages. You know, they're showing that the stoop, the door, your top front and the forecourt forecourt are the type of building frontages, and they're all described in the code as well, so do you think those are all appropriate with this development, or do you think others should be added, or do you think some should be removed? That's where you kind of like, you're getting into really the design of what this is and what options you feel are are important. You're talking building height, one to three stories. Do you think that that is that's good? If you went to, do you think it should be higher? That's what you need to flush out and and discuss.
Did you dabble with any um design that of the types of buildings that are allowed by the form base code, or did you?
Yes, so if if we were to try to to fit what already exists in here, uh we will end up with the with the multi blacks, so small effects, rather uh uh row houses and and live ones. These are these are like the pre-technologies that we can fit in here, and we fit the most requirement with the exception again, most part of the setback from the from the rear.
So so you have a plan B?
We have, we have, we have a plan B where we we apply for several minor waivers and and. So this is just a way to fit these basically three different types of in one? Yeah, and we really hope that this is also precedent for for all this similar development, so we hope that we have like a way for something, so something that we we need to evaluate this, so it's not just finding easier path here, rather than section by taking a longer than the than the minor waivers. But it's really creating something that that is right, applicable to to other development.
Then you've had discussions with uh the fire chief about his his concerns. Where are you with that?
We're we're in good shape. Uh, there's really been a conversation uh with the fire chief with with our civil engineer. We're just waiting for the civil engineer's site plan showing the exactly the correct dimensional level, lengthways and the access for the fire traffic, uh specification for the for the heavy and and a new hydrant that has been.
Did you have to move anything around for all these discussions on?
We didn't have to move anything substantially, we just pushed the whole a little bit, our buildings by inches.
So a couple of the things too that we noted in our notes um from you guys is some of the, some of the building types have specific building widths and depths. Now, we're not proposing anything, we are knowing that there's a minimum square footage of a footprint or a structure, um but no maximum, so it's, the question is, do you feel that there should be a width, a maximum, minimum width or depth of a building? Um.
We only are really considering these things specifically if this can get used elsewhere. Because they're basically telling us what they're doing. And then we want to assign.
This is, right, this is just for this project now.
Yeah.
Could it be adopted for other?
Right.
Potential sites, yes, so that's why it's could you really think it through?
There's no way you can just we'll do this building type for this one, don't you like? Don't look at these requirements for other ones.
Yes, maybe another building type.
Okay.
I think that it has I think the building type is you know, on brand in Kingston because of what it's like. I mean, it's a little might be different than what we've seen, but at least there is an intention there. I think that maybe because of the neighborhood, the height, I mean it would, I would have seen and imagine like, you know how when we looked at the height variations when we were at the project for the um teenager home, and we were there, we were looking at the variations of like what it would block or what it would cast shadows over. We had the same thing in Midtown with that development. There would have to be a lot of like digging into that for height, but as far as like the style of home, I mean, it does, it does appear modern, but at the same time too, if it's following a a design that has some sort of reference to the culture of the roots of the city, I mean I I think that that's you know, something to consider.
So regarding height, they don't even.
Maybe put a description more of that philosophy kind of thing, I don't know. May maybe that's a way to yeah, I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I think that people, if I think that people understand that instead of that 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 is important, if if that's what stands out as important to me it that may be important to other you know, constituents. That 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 is the reason why it looks this way, because in the past too, we've seen a lot of modern suggestions for very older neighborhoods and it just doesn't look right. Well, things might not seem like it's like a perfect piece, but if you are bringing in something that's you're contextualizing something based on something that really does exist, or you're just not very used to seeing it that way, then at least that has a little bit more substance.
Do you, do you understand what she's kind of getting at in terms of maybe bringing a little bit more of um the background of the design theory into the description a little bit?
Absolutely.
Maybe speaking to, you know, reflective of the surrounding yeah, context of the neighborhood and the the historical Dutch. Yeah.
The word.
Yeah, I know what you get, yeah.
Yeah, we did a good job of virtualizing that at first, maybe you just needed paper, is that what you're looking for?
Well, it's got, it would go into the description section
Yeah.
of the of the type of the building type.
To think, I'm sure, but I'm going for that. And 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 just I want to say also like the the requirements that we have in here, uh we we as, we assume, maybe maybe it's incorrect that we're still uh we're still under all the requirements of the T five N, flats. The ones. Still like a maximum ten thousand square foot per building, the 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 maximum height, etc., etc., so all of this is still a flat.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, because the T five N is like three and a half stories, and they're limiting this to three, so.
Now, you talked about footprint. There's a minimum that is required, but not a maximum, right?
Well, that's, that is their proposal, right? Three hundred fifty square foot minimum building footprint and no maximum.
Okay.
And the maximum is ten thousand for for the zoning?
I mean, to me, this doesn't look intrusive. Um. And, you know, they've been working with the fire department for emergency access, tweaking things around, you know, they couldn't put something big there and but so I mean, I think that
I think the phrase of this is also going into the details of all this, and we've seen projects really you know, become even more refined.
I mean, I think I think it's good.
So like, if you look at the courtyard style building type, you know, it has, you know, courtyard width, courtyard depth, courtyard area, fifty square feet per unit minimum. So that's, that is the courtyard building. Um, you know, so there there are other you know, building types maybe to look at that are similar. You see if there are aspects of those that you want to be have brought into this as well. I mean, here they do have you know, they do show width of a courtyard, length of a courtyard, um they do have that in here, it's so the thing, you know, is to look at how others are are kind of established, and then, you know, do you have any thoughts for this one?
I mean, the fact that they're including a courtyard in here. Um. No, I think it's gonna I think it's gonna draw people in there, and people are gonna be curious about what's going on.
Like the cottage court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I mean, yeah.
It definitely.
There'll be things going on in here.
Community and yeah.
There's some commercial spaces here, that's good, that's gonna have, it's gonna invite people in.
So that's cottage court, which is another building type, which is similar, only that's more, that's more residential nature.
Detached.
Got a lot of safety features too, if you have young guys, you know.
And you're just, you're just making note of this, just as there's other options, not necessarily that you're opposed to this.
Oh, no.
No.
I we encourage that to actually look at a building
Yeah.
Appropriate for this sign, absolutely.
Yes, if we want to make any of this more specific.
Yeah, so or or modification, I mean, you know, like I said, there's, you know.
And you know, if with it with this design with other developments that may pop up in the city, they may, they may look to this as being something that was successful, hey, let's do something and then, you know, similar, with, you know, what's in a project on another location in Kingston, so. That's our hope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we let's say that we set the the building height for this to three point five maximum. I mean, that then need to be brought down if it were in a different, like a a near a zone that would not allow for that height. Or with it, this building type.
Yeah, because that would be a maximum.
Yeah.
So if you were like, if you were in another transit that said your your building height max is two and a half, then that would be your.
Oh, okay, yeah. And okay, it would be one, two, three, four, five, okay.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't understand you. First, this is the is the transect though? Yeah. I mean, could we, could we put building height up to three point five just to see what someone wants to do if they decide to do this somewhere that they they can go that high? Or I guess thank you for that fact here, but.
Yeah, I mean, they, this is, this is what they, this is what they're saying, and and yeah, so you're you're making the final decision, so if you think it should be adjusted.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
To go higher?
Yeah, I think an extra half story, if someone wanted to try to do something with this and have an extra half story.
And that will entail a waiver?
This is the waiver. The building type is a waiver.
That includes the height too, right?
I'm just, I'm just talking about setting the the maximum height for this building type if someone were to use this for another project. They couldn't say, I'm doing a row uh a row house court that is three point five stories and still have a video.
Well, the alternative is to the own, their own application asking for it, right?
Um, I think they just wouldn't be able to use this type even if they were in let's say they were in the same zone that allows three point five, but they want to use this building type and this building type only allows three.
Well, the only way they could use, someone could take, use this building type in another location would be to request a major waiver.
Yeah.
Or the council would have to look at the code and look at putting it in the code as
I guess. Yeah, yeah.
This is only for
Right, right.
Right now, this is only for their.
Alright, so we should talk about that after.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. And we did, like, in in a in our letter, we proposed
Yeah.
if if the if the city was to apply this on a broader scale, we proposed T five F five N for N and the S E F M U uh here as transit has potential, thus candidates for this.
We're not gonna prove to a great we.
No, when I think what they they wanted to present it, they wanted to initiate this discussion. Are there any really any significant concerns or comments that think you want to exchange or make note of?
I have a question. Like if you go Grand Street or or any of the streets.
Frog Alley?
Well, well, uh North Front Street. Crosses. Cause the building height, the building types on North Front Street doesn't look like these. Doesn't look like this design.
Um.
On North Front Street, or Grand Street or any of the other streets.
North Front. I'm trying to think of the transit. A lot of that is a T five MS.
Well, that's North.
Which probably goes, would allow a higher structure. This is a T five N.
There is a bank there that's quite high, right?
And we can have a cross street.
At the corner is North Front and Green.
And Green, yeah.
Yeah. You're just talking about they look more like storefront uh main street type.
Right. Let me just do this. Because this design you were basing it on a Dutch style design.
That, right.
In this way. And characters of the other buildings don't look like that. That was just my, you know.
The inner business, you saying, or this?
Other, other buildings in the area.
I mean, I mean, do you think that this proposal is rather remote from the Green Street side of North Front, that it wouldn't have to reflect what that looks like over there? I mean, I, I, I'm just, that's what I'm asking now.
They, they don't know. It's just, that was just the thing that I was just thinking about. Doesn't look like the buildings in the surrounding area. Those are my concern.
Well, I mean, in the immediate area, there's really, it's like a hodgepodge anyway.
Probably she's isolated.
Goodyear garage.
Fifty years of gold spectrum, you have our yard, bank.
I don't think it's a car deal, it's a, it's a.
Well, the building is still there.
Go back to the last conversation we had too. I hate to bring it up again, but at least with this project, which is di- very different than the one that we talked about before. These are, you know, I, I appreciate you presenting and coming up with something, you know. It's, it's, it's a starting place. It's, it, it's good. It's optimistic. These guys are certain that the people that want to move here don't have cars or don't need to have cars to live here.
It's just a different.
It is, it is very different. It is. So it's tough.
And they put some thought into, you know, reflecting Dutch heritage and how things look over. I mean, I've never been to Holland, but I mean, how things appear there.
Right, and knowing that we have time, like we have so many other projects that we've seen it's where it started and to see where it got to and then input from the board and working with developers like this. We've seen some really amazing things happen.
Yeah, I think the, can Sony ever break down to those stories and do we go through an absolute? Yeah, those stories, yeah. So it would be the same, would it be the same height was.
Where it already does.
Uh, Kyle, do you mind putting the, 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 the drawing?
The.
The one we submitted, yes. The last.
I mean, I, I, I think that this particular side of North Front is drastically different than the other side.
Yeah. We, so that's
Yeah.
No. It's the, 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 the street front, right? Um, and, and we located here, uh, this is, this is based on, on the, on the code requirements. So, so both the regularity of the pattern of the, of the windows, the height of the, of each, of each floor, the stills, so the elevation from, from the, from the street level. Uh, we have, we want this to be a shopping mall. We have truly commercial aim, but it goes to want to bring some traffic, but we also wear that it's kind of like a bench, right? Drive, so it's not, it's not a lot of the, uh, traffic continuing until we develop more that, that way. Uh, but we do have the storefront, uh, that meets again all the environments of the, of the live work. So, so all of that is contextual and it is meeting the, the standards defined in the, in the code. It's confidential, we hope.
So I think what, what they're probably looking for is, I mean, are you, are they, you know, if they're headed in the right direction with this building type? Do you have any concerns, um, with what they're presenting? Did, I think we can refine some of the language a little bit.
Yes.
We'll get your comments.
Okay.
Um, but I think then overall, we're happy with it.
Yeah, great. You hear that? We'll refine the language and we'll wait for your comments and submit it again.
Yeah, I know you heard the last, you know, the end of the last discussion. The next meeting is December eighth, which is somewhat right around the corner. And, and the due date is next week. So are you anticipating reading submissions for the December meeting? Or are we looking at pulling a complete package together for January?
Well, definitely we'll have to get the major waiver, uh, if you can for next, uh, next month. So any comment, uh, uh, including the letter and.
Okay, the waiver probably would come with the final approval. It gets all done. It wouldn't be final decision done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we, we hope to submit the, we submit, considering the utility's drawings and more drawings from the, from the city region, which could also require safety and, uh, that will be end of next week, this, this one?
Yeah, this, yeah, this with the twenty sixth, it's not next week, there's probably. Yes, the day before Thanksgiving. Yeah, not Wednesday.
You still with us, Kobe?
I'm with you guys.
Do you have anything you, you want to say, Kobe?
No, nothing beyond what's been added. I, I think our, uh, our intention here has been to follow the context of the neighborhood, even if it's not stylistically, uh, identical to some of the other buildings in the city region. That, that's been the intention and I think with the building types that, that we're proposing here, it is, A- Alessandro said, we're sort of taking what is already existing elsewhere in the code and streamlining it for this. And, uh, I personally, I, no surprise here, lo- love the, the, what we're proposing and, and think that it's a really good model that, that I'd love to see other people use throughout the city. Um, and it's, it's funny, earlier today, I, I was sharing plans around with some folks in, in the region. And they said, you know, we really like this, this plan set. It's in a different jurisdiction. Um, we'd love to adopt that here. And so, uh, I, you know, the, the hope here is that this waiver can set the, um, the foundation for, you know, not only our project, but hopefully others like it. And we can talk more about questions of aesthetics and, and what the buildings are, are going to look like. Uh, but specific to, to the plan itself, um, you know, our intention is to, to be as considerate as we can to, to our surroundings and to all the work that's been done in, in the code so far.
Yeah, thank you.
Very.
Great.
Anybody else have any other questions?
But just for the board's reminder too, that the next time, once, once we have a more complete package, that we'll be scheduling the public hearing on this.
Right, so this time we'll make a motion, we favor item number four. Andrew with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Harry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. See you soon. Bye, I'll catch you.
Okay, item number five, we're in waivers now. One oh six Down Street. Major waiver request installing six foot fence height along the property line, wearing four foot is maximum. That's under section four oh five, point fourteen, point high, point one, point lowercase A. Block right there. Um, section block and lot forty point three hundred thirty-three dash nine dash ten. Trans X O T four and work for Barbara Matthews is the applicant. Uh, Shaden Freud, did I pronounce that right? LLC is the owner.
Donovan.
Shaden Freud. Okay. You must be Ms. Matthews.
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have an, we have a picture behind here of your, it's already up, right?
It's up, yes. I didn't realize that it's only fifty-four feet. Cause it's on the side.
Right.
And so we built it and then
Okay.
The neighbor diagonally across got approved for
Yeah.
a fence, which is actually looks higher, but.
Okay. I used to look at that area.
There in the past.
Yes, there was. And there was a six foot fence there in the past.
It was six feet, yeah. And we took it down because it was not in good shape.
And then we started getting all kinds of trash and I've had shopping carts in the backyard and somebody left their baby carriage there and tires. So we wanted to close it off again and allow the people to have some privacy. That was our intention.
Very good.
I know it's true with the latest historical stuff, but if it existed before at a certain height, is that different than some other? Doesn't matter.
Well, this was removed for a couple of.
A couple of years, yeah.
It's removed at all. Like, let's say someone wanted to repair their six foot.
Repair is different. You can take down one panel all the time.
Oh, you can't take down the whole thing.
You have to, you have to repair it. You have to keep repairing your rest.
Yeah, that's the way to keep it grandfathered.
Well, who did that for you?
Yeah, it was on the fence, but the other guy's from.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, we're gonna go to.
Just a per.
Yeah. Um, you want to go over that checklist or we agree to? I should have brought a bottle that I never today seen, but I.
Well, in my car, if you want.
I wasn't gonna be reading any resolutions or, or anything like that. My bottle of water, hold. Uh, all right, we have the checklist, uh, for, uh, the waiver request. Um, the applicant has included a waiver request letter that clearly identifies and describes the way of being proposed accompanied by plans or other visual representations as applicable. They had done that as usual. You submit that to you.
Yeah, you look at some, yes.
But I just want to make sure you're okay with it. That's a yes?
I'll say yes.
You know, you know, I want you to read it. Um, in their letter, the applicant describes in detail why the waiver is needed and how the waiver is consistent with the intent, design and compatibility of the transect zone to which the project is located.
Yes.
Yes. Will granting the waiver contribute to the realization of the overall intent of the transect zone and result in an improved project, which will be an attractive and durable contribution to the transect zone? Yes, yes?
Yes.
To support walkable neighborhoods and or mixed use centers, the project evaluates the neighborhood context for how far the buildings relate to the sidewalk, how the facade is designed and how the building interacts with the street. I mean, is this, uh,
Say yes.
Yeah, I was either, I'm thinking of any part here, so yes. The project supports a green and resilient future by, for example, reducing vehicular miles traveled, providing green infrastructure and or street trees and or including high quality usable open space. Is that under, and they're? The project supports incremental development patterns in size and density and supports infill development for the reuse of existing buildings. N A?
N A.
The project supports the provision of a variety of housing types to support a range of income levels, age groups and family units. N A? And the project specifies street design that is walkable and bikeable and will reinforce safe and comfortable environments for all users. N A, as well.
I would say yes.
That's a yes?
Yeah.
How does that?
To street sign. It, it's, well, it's with the users, sidewalk. I would say yes. To me, that's part of the street sign.
Yes, we agree with the yes.
Well, it's a safe and comfortable environment.
Yeah, that's, that's the. Will let walkable and will.
Maybe just pick out a few.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with any of this.
Okay, so it looks like it qualifies for a waiver.
Yeah.
And that, um, at this time, I will make a motion that we approve the major waiver. Yeah, it's a secret, isn't it?
Distributes.
I know. All right, so under secret, this is type two action, so no further review of the board of the part of that. Think maybe should that bold type for me, cause sometimes I miss that. It's such a small paragraph, maybe. Um, all right, um, at this time, we'll make a motion that we approve the major waiver, waiver request uh, for item number five. Good speech. And so, Arthur with a second. All in favors?
I'm.
All in favor, I'm.
I.
Okay. Gary. Okay. Thank you. What's that?
Thanks very much.
Okay. Yes.
Yep.
Great. We're in the office here. Under advisory, item number six is eighteen dash thirty, East of Riley Street, site plan to convert drugs, construct addition for a new municipal firehouse, section block and lot is fifty-six point twenty-six there six dash forty-eight point one hundred, secret determination, transect zone T five F, ward nine, city of Kingston is the applicant owner. Hi.
Hey. Hi, I'm Justin. I'm city staff in engineering department and we are presenting our uh, construction project, uh, to the planning board, um, in the means of, uh, properly building and executing, uh, construction project. Good. Also, it's also under review by the planning department, has been, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, the building, uh, safety. We're gonna pull a building permit, uh, very soon. And so we're, um, trying to do everything right. And, uh, we'll take any suggestions we can get now or as we go along.
So this is a advisory, um, review. It's not required, not mandatory, but, uh, we're still looking at it, um, and offering any thoughts or comments on site plan itself. And I don't know, I think the board members have had a chance to look at the drawing sets that have been voted. Um, if you have any questions, you're all familiar with the location. They have, uh, gone through an extensive review with the, uh, common council for the funding, which is all secured now, um, as well as, uh, the secret determination was done uh, by the common council and, uh, also, um, so there is a lot of internal, um, modifications that are going to be done to this particular structure to accommodate new uses. Achieve this here also, um, if you have any questions, um, the current facility, which is right across the street, will remain um, as a firehouse, um, but the, uh, current structure will be primarily the dispatch function and the ambulance function. The new firehouse will accommodate the equipment, the larger truck equipment, um, and it will also house uh, the, um, suites for the firefighters. Um, so their kitchen area, their lounge area, their bedroom area, locker rooms. Uh, there's some training facilities there, um, as well as I think maybe workout equipment or some, I don't know. Is there anything like that in there?
No, no.
No. Okay. Um, there's extra storage in this building, um, in the reader that, um, will be used for the, um, boat and the trailer, anything else?
Uh, the, the boats, trailers, hopefully when we redo the backside, it'll make it more bigger where our small council fit in.
What time? So there is, um, if you recall, a couple of months ago, they were here for, um, the subdivision lot line revision.
A year ago.
Okay.
It's a lot line revision, yeah.
So if you just maybe just kind of point out the internal space, um, Central Hudson'sville occupies a, a portion of the building and they're, they're in the routine that they accept the building.
This is the Jansen Ave substation is, is, uh, attached.
So you're staying.
That's another project. That's, you know, that's a separate lot and a, a separate building, um, that is attached to the one that we are working on. Um, yeah, new, new apparatus space, uh, storage, K F D's looking for storage, got lots of it. Um, kitchen and ready room, like a lounge area. Uh, this is the training room here, uh, which is all.
Uh, this is the training room here, uh, which is also going to serve as the emergency operations center and along with the city, uh, emergency operation master plan. Uh, bathrooms, um, laundry, uh, chief, maybe the deputy here.
Chief's office.
Yep. Uh, locker rooms, uh, sorry, this is the, this is the locker room, this is the, these are the showers. This is the bunk, it doesn't have the beds in it here on this plan that we're looking at, but this is the bunk room. Uh, having a separate stall makes it a gender neutral facility. Um, it'll even be also net zero with the, we will, uh, we are waiting still designed, so they aren't in the plans, but the, uh, the, uh, solar array will be on two roofs, um, on the main apparatus bay and on the secondary bay will have an array on the roof. And we've already designed in the geothermal, so there'll be wells in the apron up here that will serve the heating and cooling for the building. And it's expected to bring the operating costs, uh, to next to nothing, really. I mean, potentially, I've not done this kind of stuff before, but potentially even, uh, giving back energy to the grid. We'll see how it goes, but the numbers bring pretty close to zero, so, um, that's going to be favorable for for everyone. Uh, but namely for the K F D, this is a big deal for them to be able to expand out of the old central station and, uh, get the stuff that they need and a location that they need. And, um, you know, we just made every effort to keep the cost down as we go along. And that has its own challenges and, uh, you know, we're willing to work with everybody to to try to get, uh, what is best suited for the neighborhood.
We're gonna just talk a little bit about the physical alterations to the building, um.
It's totally good at the inside, I mean, the walls will stay up, but every, all the electric will all come out, all the buildings that's in there now, everything comes out. Um.
Is there any sort of maintenance agreement that you have to have with Central Hudson? If you're sharing, like, the buildings are attached, so you're sharing a wall?
We're sharing a wall, yeah, so firewalls, uh, in fact, the Jansen Ave substation was the original building, from what I can tell, and so this one was built onto it.
Okay.
So it is physically a standalone structure by itself, the Jansen Ave. Um, it is connected at this time by one doorway, uh, which we will remove. Um, all the interconnectivity, this this building used to be Central Hudson. It used to have, um, transformers and stuff and, um, working on vehicles and all this other stuff. Um, all that's been, all the connection to that building has been removed. Uh, so now there's not any need for any.
Okay.
Agreement. Um, not, nothing formal, um. We've had the ownership of the building for, well, just a few months now, uh, but we've had agreement to be able to do our studies and stuff in there. There isn't much interaction from that side. No.
Which timeline?
We would like to advertise bid next month, uh, if possible. We have a feasible, we have a project labor agreement study, uh, that is due back to us next week. That will tell us about labor and about how we do that. Um, most likely, we will just go forward with that, um. In which case, I think we will have all of our ducks in a row to, um, advertise the bid, probably by the second week of December. And then, uh, sometime in January, we expect to have an award. And then, uh, we're projecting March to, March, uh, twenty-sixth, uh, fourteen months to substantial completion, should make it March, April, May of, uh, twenty twenty-seven.
So it's one thing just to know, um, is that obviously this is the central fire station, primary station for the city services. The two others, one is on uptown Frog Alley, across from the project we just reviewed. And, um, one is downtown, and I had spoken with the chief about will this, creating this new facility, change of, uh, the manning of those other stations or anything? And he said, no, that's, everything is staying the way it is. I think that's important to understand as well.
The overhead doors, do they, do they allow any light in from those, or is it?
That that that's just the, uh, drawing of an overhead door, that's not the actual overhead door that's gonna be.
All right, good.
No.
Okay.
It doesn't look, it looks.
Light in or no light in?
It looks into you, you want, you want light in, you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I want the public to know that we're there, we're not dead.
Yeah.
You know.
I hate to refer to, you know, but they, that's a good design of the of the overhead door at Ulster Main Station, I mean. Is that something you're thinking about for this, like that type of design?
Love to have that.
This is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Uh huh.
Or something maybe that, with mirrors, not mirrors, but.
A mirror across the street. We, yeah, that's why the building was designed way that the design was papers, it doesn't mirror both across the street and a mirror of the city wall.
Okay.
So there's a lot of thought put into that. The apron is, uh, wide enough, the apron is where the two fire trucks are sitting on right now. It's wide enough that when we have training, which is every day, when the end stations come in, they can park the apparatus on the apron in front of the apparatus that are in the firehouse. And that will leave the road wide open, and only the only piece of equipment that would be out on the road would actually be a ladder truck. It'd have to be alongside the original central station, which would be your left hand corner.
Yeah.
On, uh, Jansen Avenue. That's where that would sit, all the parking for the firefighters on that side of the street. They will park their personal cars to the left hand side of the building in the parking lot. They're there along the street. And the firefighter, E M Ts, paramedics on this side of the street, the original building, they'll park behind firehouse, we're gonna do right now. So we are not, we are actually taking cars off the street, or off the street, but in parking lots. So the only thing you can have out front there is, uh, my car during the day and the chief's car.
Any comments from the board? Thoughts?
Well, well, plan, they're more than long build or something.
They're proud of where they are. You gotta bring the truck one back down or you gotta stay.
Truck one will not fit into the the new design there, but what will fit into the new design there is a seventy-five foot ladder truck. So with all these four, four story, five story buildings that are, have been built or are going to be proposed to be built, the seventy-five footer getting close to it will reach the roof. But, um, that is for future down the road for future growth, this is actually will be one bay, well, have nothing in the bay. It's in for future growth.
That's a good question. I mean, I'm upset, I didn't think of it.
I remember going on that bill with my grandfather, he was a hospital officer. I was shooting in June when I just go.
You took a horse buggy there, then you just. My, my great grandfather worked there too, so, yeah, Cleveland Landman. Back in the day.
Okay.
All right, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, decision unless there's anything you.
Yeah, now we're going forward.
Yeah.
Get in the wheel, um, we'll get more, we'll, we'll share the solar, um, I don't know if there's any more decision to make about it, but, um, certainly we'll just keep the communication open. Uh, there was a question about green space, we've already tried to address that a little more, so there's no drawing to share for that at this time, but, uh, you know, we are trying to incorporate some of the complete street, um, concepts into this corridor here. And we've already come up with two, three smaller areas where we could potentially have, there're gonna be snow storage. Uh, we could potentially have something that is, uh, permeable and green. Um, so we're already working on it. Uh, the the lighting in this rendering is not shown, but we are removing the the lamp post, uh, here and in the rear and not replacing them. And it's, we believe it's adequate to have, uh, the wall mounted, um, pack lights on the side of the building. This side, we could potentially do D P W even if we wanted more light coming down from both sides, but also the parking area in the back, we just do wall mounted lighting that would, you know, replace it. Right, uh, they won't be parking on here, this is probably K F D, maybe, uh.
Yeah.
We have enough parking through an easement in the, um, parking lot, the hospital parking lot, that we will be able to discourage parking along Jansen, which would have pedestrian traffic in front of the bays. So they'll be able to park over in the, it's thirteen, twelve or thirteen spots that'll be shared and the same six that we have been using, we now own those, um, so there'll be uh, a lot more parking for them to be able to enter the building from the parking lot.
You'll definitely improve the street intersection. Find things walk there.
And and also the other comment was the, uh, right now, we're just running the data and the communication wires overhead from the central building, the existing to the new one. This is just, we just do these as, uh, shoestring budget until somebody says something, um, so if you prefer it to be underground, um, you know, we can try to do that. We hadn't had a lot of pushback on that one yet, so we will also try to incorporate, um, an underground conduit that goes on under, all the way underneath the street.
Any questions for Lewis? Great. That was a very good, thank you, right?
Thanks, Justin.
To be. You have any other? No? Just laughing with a motion that I heard. Andrew with a second. All in favor?
All right.
Both. Gary.